Cynthia, you ready?
We're good.
You had one job.
Good evening, Township Council. Meeting Monday, November 22, 2018 is now called to order. Will Life Scout Jayden Doosso please approach the podium, lead us in pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. A notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January 2, 2018. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the Township Clerk on said date.
Mrs. Kraus, may you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Present.
Councilmember Lees?
Here.
Councilmember Seber?
Present.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Present.
Council President Scobah?
Present. Mayor James Damiano?
Thank you, Council President. This evening we have a very special presentation, and we have a number of our Little Falls Athletic League Champions League Soccer Program joining us here this evening. And first, I'm going to read a proclamation for all of them, and then I'm going to ask them to join me up here, one by one, because I have a special medal to hand out to all of them. So first, we're going to start with the proclamation. Whereas, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the Township of Little Falls to focus attention on noteworthy occasions and individuals. And whereas, public recreation programs, particularly youth sports, are an integral part of our community, giving our young residents a chance to participate in a healthy activity that fosters teamwork and builds strong character and lifelong skills. And whereas, the Township of Little Falls would like to recognize and celebrate the LFAC Champions League Soccer Program, and would like to let them know how proud the community is of their accomplishments. And now, it is fitting and proper that I, James Belford Damiano, mayor of the Township of Little Falls, extend best wishes and continued success to the LFAC Champions League Soccer Program. Now, I'm going to ask them each to join me up here, one at a time. If you'd like to accompany them up here, please feel free, and I have a medal to hand out to each of them. First, we have Bobby Baracco. There you go, bud. Want to stand here? Come on, hang out. Next, we have William Amorowicz. Not here. Madison DeCristo. Tyler Muggelson. Ella Larenoff. Freddie Del Toro. Robert Hanna. Here you go, bud. Brandon Garcia Spira. Devin. S. Versin. Thank you. Samuel Muggelson. We got one for you and one for your brother, okay? Eamon McAvoy. Lionel Laura. Brennan Kennan. Giovanni Rivera. There you go, Gio. Dominic Trapanis. Shawn Johnson. And Nolan Bogach. We also need to thank this evening two special individuals who really helped this entire program become what it was. And we have our Commissioners of the Champions League, Bob and Melissa Hanna, to thank for all of this. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, this evening we also have two more incredible accomplishments. And we have two individuals, one who has achieved the rank of Star Scout and the other of Life Scout. And we'd like to recognize those achievements. I can tell you, growing up, I was a member of the Boy Scouts for a number of years, but I never made it so far as to achieve any of these ranks, and achieving these is quite an incredible accomplishment. And you have a lot of things that you are very well-prepared for in life. And that said, the first individual that I would like to call up here is Jacob Tomes, to have him join me up here. All right, so we have a proclamation for you. Whereas, Jacob has proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts and has achieved the rank of Star Scout, advancing from a learner to a leader. And whereas, the Star Rank is attained with participation, leadership, service, and self-directed advancement through merit badges. And whereas, the Township of Little Falls would like to recognize the dedication and commitment of Jacob, and now it is fitting and proper that I, James Belford Damiano, mayor of the Township of Little Falls, do hereby congratulate and recognize Jacob for his achievement of the rank of Star Scout. Now, I'm going to ask Nathan Stone to join me up here. And Nathan has achieved the rank of Life Scout, and we have a proclamation for him as well. Whereas, Nathan has proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts and has achieved the rank of Life Scout and is continuing to develop leadership skills. And whereas, the Life Scout Rank is earned by fulfilling additional leadership positions, service hours, and merit badges. And whereas, a Life Scout is expected to be a role model and leader in the troop, providing guidance to new scouts and helping the troop however possible. And now, it is fitting and proper that I, James Belford Damiano, mayor of the Township of Little Falls, do hereby congratulate and recognize Nathan for his achievement of the rank of Life Scout. Congratulations, guys.
Anything else, Mayor, at this time?
That's all I have, Council President.
Can I have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by s-- I'm sorry, roll call. Mrs. Kraus, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes. Councilman Vancheri?
Sure, I just have a couple quick updates that I'll go through. Last week, I mentioned that I was waiting to hear back from the county regarding the traffic light proposal on Cedar Grove Road, Wilmore, and Francisco. Finally heard back from the county, and we have good news that our request has been approved. There will be a traffic light. We just need to get in touch with the county to go over specifics in terms of timing and what the cost will be, and figure out what will come back to Little Falls versus what the county may consider doing. But I'm pleased to say that after the six months that we worked on this, I want to thank the Transportation Committee, I have to thank the Little Falls Police Department, especially Corporal Moncato, and all the work that we did behind the scenes to make this happen. So it's coming together nicely, so grateful for that. So keep you posted as we continue the dialogue with the county. One other thing I did want to mention is, and you see some of the Boy Scouts are here, last week I had a chance to sit down with the Troop 14 from Little Falls for a discussion as part of their citizenship in the community merit badge workshop, where they got to, you know, just sit around the room with me and just ask as many questions on any different topics related to the town and the community. I have to say, I was really impressed with the dialogue and the questions that came from each of the young men that are sitting here today. And during the open forum today, you're going to see a few of them get up here as part of their merit badge to ask us and the mayor some questions. So thank you for that opportunity, boys. Looking forward to hearing from you tonight as well. That's it for me.
Councilman Lees?
Yes, last Tuesday, I had my monthly meeting in Totowa at the Passaic County Senior Center. It's something I've had for many years, being working in that situation, and I always liked it. The county center always plans the help of certain Passaic County towns, and some of their residents to be given lunch. The goal is for them to be able to eat well in places that are in place to be able to do so, and have other activities in the town. And this is something that's nothing new. My role has been is to visit the various towns and places with another group of people with us, and given a visit as a team. This is something that has always worked well, and we are in the process of organizing it again in a short time. And to make this work well for all the residents in the county, as most of these people are in the northern part of Passaic County. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lees. Councilwoman Cordero?
Thank you. Well, our holiday on Main Street, all the events are growing daily. I think it's going to be a very exciting time in the town. I want to remind everybody that this coming Saturday, we have our Little Falls Business Association Breakfast with Santa. I know the first seating is completely sold out. The second seating is on the verge of being sold out. It's really something great to see in our town, and we get so many, so many residents that are participating. And then the following week, we will have our tree lighting ceremony, followed by other events. I just want to say, if you haven't been by Memorial Park at night and seen how great the park looks with our new streetlights throughout the park, you really need to go and see it. And I want to thank Mr. Simone and his team, and I want to thank the mayor for making this happen. It really makes such a difference in the park, and that's kind of like our entryway into our downtown area, and it really looks terrific, and I'm thrilled that it's going to be there for the tree lighting. I also want to just give my special thanks to the Boy Scouts. Anytime that we reach out and need volunteers, the Boy Scouts are always there. Sometimes, we don't even have to ask, and they're always there to do things throughout the town. And I particularly want to acknowledge and thank them for all of the hard work they did during our neighbor-to-neighbor outreach to residents that were affected by the flood. We really could not have done that without their help, and they were really terrific. So I just want to give them a big thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Seber?
Thank you. I actually don't have any updates this week, so that's it. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything for us?
Very briefly, Council President. First, as Councilwoman Cordero indicated, the new lights at Wilmore Park are up. They look outstanding. That is step one of getting our park looking like it should. The lights at night, if you haven't been by there, are something worthwhile to drive by and check out. At times, last year's tree lighting ceremony, it was almost treacherous. It was so dark in that area of the park. This year, it'll be well-lit and very safe. It's something that was in the pipeline for some time, and through our Open Space Committee, we were able to secure our lighting, and it's now installed. On the topic of lighting, we also finally have received our tennis court lights, which were recently delivered to our recreation center. Those lights will be installed shortly. They are, they're not up yet, correct, Phil? The poles and everything, and all the parts were delivered. We are awaiting final install, so our tennis courts will be well-lit for our tennis league, which oftentimes plays well into the night. So those courts will be well-lit at night. Finally, also as Councilwoman Cordero said, our annual tree lighting will be Friday, December 7, the first Friday in December. We invite everyone to join us at the annual holiday tree lighting at Wilmore Park, so please, please be there if you're available that evening. It's always a wonderful night. Now, that's all that I have for my report this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Wenzel?
I have nothing to report.
Kevin, motion is second to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time, and this is all discretion of the Council President.
The floor is open. Good, good evening.
Just a little issue regarding--
Sir, I'm sorry, you have to tell, you have to stay by the podium with the mic and tell your name and address, sir.
Andrew Baggett and my wife, Mary Ann, 105 and 107 Main Street, Little Falls--
Thank you.
Between Center and Stevens.
Thank you.
Regarding ordinance 1341 about the parking.
Sir, are you passing something out?
Yeah, just a map, just a location, just with a quick--
Can the council see that before you pass it out? That's okay, we have rules, we have to follow by. Is that good?
Yeah.
You can leave them with--
You leave them with--
Mr. Kucia.
Mr. Kucia over there.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, it's come to my attention through a Good Samaritan about this issue, and was never notified. I don't know if you have any legal matter to notify people, but out of a courtesy, you could have notified me and my wife, and the building owners, and my tenants. This directly affects everybody in town, but it affects us more because it's our property with the taking of the sidewalk, from what I understand. And I don't know how many parking spots are going to be eliminated, but they need to be saved, as many as they can, on that side of the street. There, it's going to put a damper on my businesses. Tried very hard to get good tenant in there, have a good tenant with the fabric shop. He gets deliveries, he has people coming in and reupholstering furniture that needs to be dropped off. I don't know if these issues have come up about deliveries or anything along those lines. And no parking on that side of the street is just going to put a damper on anybody's business. Just news report over the weekend about Small Business Saturday in Jersey City. Reporter was asking the lady, was just in a store similar to yours up the street, had a lot of business, "How come you're slow?" They, the city eliminated parking on this side of the street. So it does affect people. It affects us directly. We're there, I realize, everybody, it's a tough situation. I know the, I'm there, and I see the mirrors getting ripped off, the buses, I know it's a safety issue, but need to save as many spots on that side of the street as possible. Take more of the sidewalk, whatever you have to do, but we need to save some spots there. I also coming, propose a new crosswalk coming up from the steps of the canal parking there. If there's going to be no parking or even a few spaces eliminated, the next crosswalk beside Stevens and Main is Union Boulevard and Main. So that would be a couple more concerns there, to get another one, even maybe on Center Avenue. I know it's a lot wider there and a lot harder to do, but maybe we can put, all these other towns have stanchions in the middle, pedestrians right away, you must stop, you know, just any, any way to get pedestrian-friendly and keep it, you know, especially when there's no parking, if they're going to eliminate anything there, just, that's my main concern there, if we can just do something with that.
So, sir, for the record, you're the owner of the number on Main Street? What number is your building?
105 and 107.
You don't reside there, is that correct, or you do?
No, I don't.
Okay, so you're, did you say, for the record, that was your residence when you came to the podium?
No, I didn't.
What is your residence, sir?
My residence is Denville.
Okay, can you give us that for the record?
Yes, 78 Franklin Road--
Okay, thank you. You have that, Cynthia?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what you're coming before this governing body is that the ordinance that is going to eliminate parking in front of your building--
On that side of the street.
On that side of the street. This is council, so I wanted to bring everyone up to speed, so they understood what the concern here was and what you're coming for.
Yeah, just, you know, that's just going to kill the business. Deliveries, how do you get, how do my tenants get their laundry out? How do they bring their groceries up? I mean, we're, you know, I know it's a tough situation with the parking in town, but this is just going to kill my businesses. Tried so hard to get a good guy in there, had a lot of tenants come in there and want to put something that wouldn't be appropriate with the town, and I've turned them away. I did, did my best, been paying taxes for over 25 years in Little Falls, maintained the building, worked hard at it. I know there's a lot of stuff going on. I looked next door at 103, I see a padlock on a door at 103 Main Street after the fire four years ago. I mean, it just, you know, pretty, I know they're going to be, I can see there's action going on with the town and the gas station and all that, so I realize things are in the works, and I appreciate all your job on everything that's done. I see a lot of improvements in town, but those are my concerns. I would appreciate that notification. Might not be an illegal obligation, but notify us. Let me know, you know, I could have repaired the sidewalk, they're ripping them up, they're tearing it down. Nobody knows. I mean, I feel the variance you were going for, I don't want to take up any more--
No, you're welcome to stay at the podium, sir. You don't need to go anywhere. Does the council have any questions at this time regarding this? Okay. Mayor, would you like to explain the process of how we have derived to this circumstance of not--
Sure.
--wanting parking on that part of the Main Street?
Sure, so as we indicated during the workshop meeting regarding this issue last week, the county has notified us that the road, the width of Main Street, the roadway, is not wide enough for four, again, for lack of a better term, lanes wi-- it's not four lanes wide. It's not, it's only wide enough to be three vehicle widths wide. So with parking on each side of the street there, the roadway, as you indicated, it was becoming a safety issue. You also indicated that you've seen mirrors taken off of vehicles there, et cetera. That's the exact reason why this ordinance is something that I believe is necessary here. It was the, there are four spaces on that side of the roadway between the bus stop and the stop line at Stevens Ave. It is those four spaces which we are proposing to have eliminated as, for this ordinance.
I think there's five. I think there's two in front of the bus stop.
Five.
There's a whole, might be, I'm not sure. I didn't want to count.
It may, it may, it may be five.
But anything we could save behind the bus stop?
There are no spaces--
In front of the bus stop, I mean, in front--
There are no spaces behind the bus stop, because the bus requires enough room--
No, I--
--to make its way over to the right to approach the bus stop itself. So you may be correct, there may be five spaces in front of the bus, between the front of the bus stop and Stevens Ave. Those five spaces pose an issue, again, with the width, based upon the width of the roadway. There is no taking of any sidewalk there. The sidewalk is, the current sidewalks are going to remain where they are. They're already, especially on, I guess, the northern side of Main Street, it's already extremely narrow to begin with, and vehicles already mount that particular curb oftentimes just to get out of the way of buses or trucks and different things, to avoid having their mirrors removed. Again, it is a safety issue more than anything. This is not about hurting business. It also becomes late in the day, around the rush hour time, probably the biggest clog that we have in the middle of town, slowing down traffic much further west through town. Even this evening, as I came to the municipal building westbound on Main Street, there was a line of traffic from Stevens Ave at the light all the way up to Union Boulevard, or Union Ave here, with constant--
Yeah.
--vehicles backed up. So it is a major issue for us there in getting vehicles through. There's, that's also one of the reasons why this was being proposed, was to help traffic flow through the middle of town. Now, that said, something that has been discussed on numerous occasions in this council chambers is we are in discussions with PNC Bank to acquire that lot as a municipal lot. So it is something that, while I understand your frustrations with five spots being eliminated, we do hope that in the near future, we will actually be adding, I don't know the exact number yet, once the engineering is completed, we'll have a better idea, but we are looking to add upwards of, I would guess, well over 50 or 60 municipal spaces, actually, maybe closer to 70 or 80 municipal spaces, in that area of town, which will just be, you know, an extra, it'll basically be an extra 100 feet from where, where those spaces are now. So we do understand the premium that there is on parking. We see it across the board. We know the businesses in town to thrive need parking. For our downtown to thrive, we need our businesses. So having parking for the public to use is something that is absolutely in the forefront of our minds. In fact, one of the ordinances this evening has to do with the acquisition of a property, which the intent is to create additional downtown parking, which is almost adjacent to the property that you own there. So parking is something that we are always interested in. It is something that we recognize is an issue in many downtowns. But again, at this point, those five spots, I believe, pose a more of a safety issue than anything else, and this is not being done to inconvenience anyone.
Yeah, I realize that. How about deliveries? I mean, what, how can we deal with that? I mean, how's a guy going to get delivery in there? How's he--
Well, that roadway, based upon what the county has indicated, is going to be realigned. So when it is realigned, it won't be wide enough for parking on that side of the street at all, because the road, the stripes on the line are going to be pushed a little bit further south in that, yes, south in that area, a little bit closer to your side of the street there. So it will not be wide enough for a vehicle to park there.
I mean, did anybody think of that? I mean, you know, I mean, you're just, you're killing the guy. I worked hard to get a guy in there, and I know it's only one guy, and you might say, "This affects the whole town." I'm the guy right there that affects directly. I mean--
There's no doubt about it.
--and my business is, I've tried very hard to get good people in there, and it's very difficult. So that's all, I just, I appreciate all your concern, I appreciate everybody's hard work, right on down the row. I see a lot of good things going on in town, but see if there's something you can do for me there. Also, the crosswalk, I think, is necessary to make it more pedestrian-friendly, the town, and it needs it. Every other town has it, and it's not even at a corner. I live in Denville, I see them in the middle of the street, in the middle of the block with a stanchion, pedestrian right away, and on the corners, of course. But anything to make it a little more pedestrian-friendly, it's going to just really hurt a guy's business.
That's certainly something that we can consider, is adding a new crosswalk there. And in fact, we can ask our Transportation Committee, if you mind, to look into adding a crosswalk in that area of town.
One, one quick thing, you mentioned the bank, Little Falls Savings, is it?
A PNC.
PNC, oh, oh, in the, but you've mentioned the other one on Center?
No, that's Valley National. No, there's no discussion with them.
They've been darkening their lights sooner and sooner and sooner. I don't know if there's any ordinance about getting that, keeping that lit at night for safety?
What lights are those?
Their parking lot. Their parking lot lights, keep getting, first it was 2:00 in the morning, they turned them off, then it was 12, then it was 10, now it's about 8. I don't know what schedule they're on, but I'm sure it's a cost-cutting thing, but we need to have it for a safety issue, that it needs to be lit also. Right by you'll see. Phil, can I give Phil one of these?
Yes, you can. Go ahead. Go ahead. Sir, you addressed, you can stay there. You addressed the fact that you weren't notified-- Sir, you addressed, you can stay there, you addressed the fact that you weren't notified. I wanna get the, our counselors' take on why that, we were not notified. Counselor?
So, so the, um, the ordinance you're referring to is ordinance thirteen forty-one, I believe, and that's an ordinance we're, that the council is introducing tonight. And the way an ordinance works is that it gets introduced at this meeting, and then it has a second reading, which has a public hearing on December seventeenth, I believe. And then a publication is made in the newspaper. Now obviously, these spots that you're referring to, while they are spots which you're referencing that your tenant has used and customers going to visit the site have used, obviously those spaces...
There's even night parking there, overnight parking on Main Street now, which is gonna be eliminated.
Right, but the, but these, these spaces, you have to remember two things. Number one, this is a county road, so therefore that's why we've been talking about the county's effort in terms of realigning, so that's being done elsewhere other than within this municipality. And then secondly, the parking on that location is obviously public parking for anyone's use. So whether they're going to use the businesses at your location, the Valley National Bank, or further down even on the other side of the road, if they were gonna go to the pizzeria or further down to the dentist, all those spaces are open to the public. So while they may be near your building and near your tenants, they're not necessarily associated with your site. So if the town were to be, if they were to seek to pass an ordinance, which would affect your property directly in terms of taking your property, there'd be a direct notification. But because this is a public parking on a county roadway, that's why there's not a personal notification to you. That's how that works.
How about going forward? Any notification about where the progress is? I mean, I'm just have to keep abreast of it through here?
Well, you...
I mean, there's no, I mean, there's not all that many people that are involved with it, I mean...
Right, I think, I think you're, you know, obviously, your, your concerns have been heard by the administration, the mayor and council, and you can interface with them as you feel you need to, but in terms of notification, the next notification is by publication in the newspaper, and obviously the next date that this matter will be directly discussed by the public and by the council will be on December seventeenth. But between now and then, I'm sure that, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the mayor and council or the administration, but I'm sure if you need to interface with any of them, I'm sure you can do that between now and then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. Keep up the good work, town looks great. Thank you to all the Boy Scouts and everybody getting the word there, good job.
The floor is open? You okay?
Yeah, mind the, there's, there's a wire.
There's a wire there?
Too close, that's why.
Someone does the job.
Mr. Fernandez, Harrison Street?
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Um, I wasn't able to attend the meeting...
We missed you.
The worship. I miss you too. You're already being sarcastic, but that's all right.
Not sarcastic, there was nobody here.
Happy Thanksgiving. Let me express my dissatisfaction again with the ordinance thirteen forty-one, you're eliminating spaces again, and I understand that it's the county, but not too long ago we passed an ordinance by spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, not county money, taxpayers' money to buy Stanley Street. Now, from what I hear, we're spending another, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to buy a property that is, these are his words, adjacent to the building that this gentleman has. That makes already six hundred and, almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Plus, and again, what I hear from the mayor, what I just heard from the mayor, we are, the township is thinking of buying, um, PNC, no, spaces at PNC Bank or what, sixty, seventy, eighty? You weren't sure. But I, I'm sure it's gonna be, again, taxpayers' money. And so they're spending all this taxpayers' money that the county's eliminating, everybody's eliminating, and so we get the bill, that's all we get. Because it sounds to me, from what council, the attorney, Mr. Wenzel was saying, that it's a done deal, it's his public space, his county roads, so the meeting and the second reading and the, you know, third reading, whatever it is, is just a, you know, preliminary, it's just a, because they have, for lack of words, nothing better to do. We're just gonna hear what you have to say, and nothing can be done. So I'm wondering, when are we gonna, the taxpayers, when are we gonna spend tax money to create spaces that they're being eliminated by somebody else? Don't we have anything to say other than paying taxes?
Mr. Fernandez, I guess to kind of summarize your comments this evening, you're saying the county's taking away spaces from the township of Little Falls, why don't they reimburse us for spaces?
That would be nice.
Is that your premise, basically?
That would be nice.
So just to go back, it would be nice, wouldn't it? But to go back, this is a, and I'll ask the council and the mayor to comment, this was a pure safety issue. I guess you've been in town a long time, and so have I, that that particular area is very chaotic at certain times of, one, backing up traffic, two, if you open up your door on Main Street, it's a very risk area. So to get back now to your other comments about spending of taxpayers' money, and I'll let the mayor address the PNC issue, because that's, he'll clarify that about the money's aspect.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause you mentioned the PNC.
You know, let me, let me comment on something that you said, that is, is a issue, is a safety issue. Whatever the issue might be, we are gonna get the bill, and we're gonna have to pay for it, so...
We'll get the bill for eliminating spaces?
We are paying for the spaces. The taxpayers are paying for the spaces, whether it's an issue, whether it's the weather, whether it's, whatever the reasons are. We are, the taxpayers are picking up three hundred and twenty-seven, five hundred dollars. Am I correct?
Mr. Fernandez, the purchasing of the, of those lands for parking would have occurred with or without this, five, we're losing five spaces. That was needed on behalf of the center of town. Let me get, mayor, is, Mr. Fernandez is asking about PNC. Would you please go into a little bit about the cost and what that is?
Sure, so I don't have the figures in front of me, but I've done an analysis on what potentially metered parking can actually generate in revenue versus what the cost would be to purchase the, the properties that you're referring to. And the figures that you're indicating as far as about three hundred and fifty dollars to purchase a property on Stanley Street, that's correct. But once you amortize that over a, over a period of approximately twenty years, and you calculate the revenue that can be generated from those spaces that we are considering putting in, in, in that particular area, these particular pieces of property can actually generate substantial revenue for the municipality. So to say it's costing the taxpayers, yes, there's absolutely a cost involved, but that cost will very well be offset by the revenue generated on those spaces, which we intend to input over where those current properties are. And again, I don't have the particular figures in front of me, I've run several spreadsheets on them, even at minimal dollar amounts for minimal hours a day and minimal spaces being utilized. The amount of revenue being generated on those individual properties now is nominal, with only twenty-five percent approximately being retained by the municipality, with the other approximate seventy-five percent being paid to the schools in the county. So once a calculation is done, as far as the amount of money that is currently being retained by the municipality for those properties versus what it will cost us to acquire these properties and then install parking spaces, the, again, the revenues is the portion of the calculation that I don't think you're taking into consideration in these purchases. Because much like our, I'll use an example, our paid EMS service, early on, it was thought that the paid EMS service was actually going to cost the municipality. And at first, during its early stages, it was costing the municipality about the same amount as it was with much better response time and a full-time paid EMS service. There was no additional cost to the, to the municipality, because the revenues that the program generated offset the additional costs. So therefore, it was a net zero. This is something where I am hopeful will actually generate revenue and not even be a net zero, but even at a net zero, we are providing substantial downtown parking for our residents and for those who want to visit this municipality and spend their money in our town to assist in our downtown in thriving. So while, even if this is a net zero on the income for the municipality, which again, I hope it is not, it is something that will assist our downtown in thriving, which I've indicated, which I know we've discussed in the past, will help property values throughout town thrive, it will drive our property values up, which is something that I'm sure all of us living, living in this town would be very happy with, considering there's, you know, we've had discussions of Ridgewood and towns like that. Again, I'm not gonna get into all of that right now, but to respond to your particular concerns, those five spaces, yeah, it's a shame to lose five spaces in our downtown, there's absolutely no doubt about it. Like I said, we're working to increase the parking. Unfortunately, those spaces have become a safety issue. It's something that is an issue for all of us in town, and it's something that needs to be addressed.
You say, do you have any idea how much the, the spaces from PNC Bank will go for? If, if it comes to fruition, how much PNC will sell the township, the spaces for?
I'm not sure yet, we have not finalized...
Okay, but I, I'm sure they're not giving them for free.
I can almost guarantee that.
Okay, so, so far, so far, and, and the thing that makes me mad, mayor, is because you mentioned a safety issue, and I understand. But so far, like I said, between the two, Stanley and the other one, the one that is on tonight, we are spending almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Am I correct? You, so far you're...
Correct.
Okay, plus, we're gonna be spending a good chunk of money on PNC Bank for safety issues as well. All right, and the thing that makes me mad is that you know what safety is all about in my end of the woods, okay? And we haven't spent a dime, and we have the reoccurring flooding problems every two years.
Mr. Fernandez...
The only thing, hold on, hold on, let me finish, please. The only thing that the town hasn't spent a dime, we got a grant for the excavator, whatever the name of the machine is, but the town hasn't done anything, anything. It seems to me that everything is focused on the downtown, on this area. Well, the residents of, I think it's called Jackson Park?
Jackson.
Jackson Park, I'm sorry. When do we come into the, into the picture? Don't we pay taxes just like the rest of the township? It seems like, that's the only thing that we are good for, to pay taxes and keep our mouths closed. And that's the thing that really makes me mad.
So, Mr. Fernandez, if I may, I know this is something that, again, this is not particularly on the...
It's not a safety issue that we get water, I mean, somebody died a few years back, am I correct?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Nineteen ninety-nine, somebody died, that is not a safety issue? How many people lost their homes these, these past August? Isn't that a safety issue? Some, some people could have died there.
Mr. Fernandez, to say that no money is being spent in that area of town is absolutely incorrect.
Oh, here we go again, no, major.
And I, I know, you say, here we go again, I understand that. We did have this exact discussion just a month ago. And to say that no money is being spent there, again, it's incorrect. I'm sure you wouldn't want to pay the bill that was just recently received by the township to clean out the Peckman River.
But, Mr. Damian, these are after the fact, we need to do something prior to...
Correct, and that's why we are acquiring this TracO, which will be utilized, and to say no money's being spent, again, the bill that is going, we are going to be paying on a somewhat regular basis to continue to clean the river is not one that you nor I wanna pay individually. It will be substantial, to remove all of this debris from this river, although we will own that piece of equipment, to cart that debris away to a place that's going to, to take it, they're not taking it for free. It's going to be a substantial cost, and that money is going to be spent on essentially your home, to make sure that something like that does not happen again. So to sit here and say that no money is being spent on the Jackson Park area of town is incorrect.
You see it that way, we, the residents, the ones that we have flooded, every couple of years, we see it the other way. And I'm sure you can, I, I don't know if you can put yourself in our place, but, you know, when you have to clean your basement every two years and throw away things every two years, we're not doing that.
I was there for a week after that flood, every single day, and I was in the basements. It's not something that I ever wanna see again. So hopefully, again, this, there is action being taken to address that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, the floor is open.
We both have a question.
Scouts, do you have questions on agenda items at this time? There's a formality that we follow here. You have questions to the counselor or mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna wait at another portion of this meeting for it to come up and ask those questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay? Would anyone else like to come up to the, I hated to do that, but I did it, right? Does anyone like to come up and talk about agenda items? Okay, see no else come forward, have a motion and a second to close to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Can we, can we, okay, okay. Yes, sorry.
Can I, can I have a motion and a second to close to the public hearing on ordinance one three three eight?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
So, Council President, can I make a request?
Go ahead, Counselor.
To move an amendment of thirteen thirty-eight, what we need to do is rename, well, we're gonna remove the code section seven dash one nine for through streets and replacing it with code section seven dash twenty, which is stop intersections. After talking to our business administrator, because of the through-street versus stop-sign intersections, we need to amend this amendment to reflect seven dash twenty versus seven dash nineteen.
Counselor, are you okay with that?
What we're doing is a reference to the, to the, to the number?
Correct, yes.
Yes, it's a different section of the code.
Okay. Because...
No language change?
Uh, well, the through-street versus the stop-street, there is a language change. Has to be read advertised.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Cucci and I agree.
We agree.
Okay.
Notice what you said, Mr. Cucci and I agree, but the Council President asked if you agree. Did I not? Mr. Simone say it that way?
Right.
Can I have a motion and a second with the amendment? Can we do it this way?
No, do we have to, because, because the, this, I'm sorry, Council President, I was, wanted to be sure that Mr. Cucci and I were on the same page before I made the following statement. Because of the nature of the amendment to the ordinance being of subst, not necessarily substantial nature, but of noticeable language change, therefore this matter needs to be re-notice, and you will have a second, second reading at the next council meeting thereafter on the seventeenth.
So we're not doing nothing tonight?
You're not, all you're doing is, is you're not making any, you're making the motion to amend...
Right.
And requesting the re-notice.
Do we, so we need a motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay.
In accordance with, with what Councilmember Vancheri said.
Can I have a motion to amend ordinance one three three eight?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those, do we need a roll call or voice, voice, vote?
Roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll on the amendment of one three three eight.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Okay, Ms...
It will be, you know, it will be re-notice...
intersections, we need to amend this amendment to reflect 7-20 versus 7-19.
Counsel, are you okay with that?
What we're doing is a reference to the, to the, to the number?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, it's a different section of the code.
Okay. Because-- No language change?
Oh, well, the through-street versus the stop-street, there is a language change. Has to be re-advertised.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Kuchi and I agree.
We agree.
Okay.
Notice what you said. Mr. Kuchi and I agree, but the Council President asked if you agree.
[laughing]
Did I not? Mr. Simone say it that way?
Right.
Can I have a motion and a second with the amendment? Can we do it this way?
No, do we have to? Because, because the, this, I'm sorry, Council President, I was wanting to be sure that Mr. Kuchi and I were on the same page before I made the following statement. Because of the nature of the amendment to the ordinance being of subst, not necessarily substantial nature, but of noticeable language change, therefore, this matter needs to be re-notice, and you will have a second, second reading--
Right.
--at the next council meeting thereafter, on the 17th.
So, we're not doing nothing tonight?
You're not, all you're doing is, is you're not making any, you're making the motion to amend--
Right.
--and requesting the re-notice.
Do we, so we need a motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay.
In accordance with, with--
All right. Can I have a, can I have a motion to amend ordinance 1338?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those, do we need a roll call or voice, voice, vote?
Roll call.
Okay. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll on the amendment of 1338.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Okay. Miss--
It will be, you know, it will be re-notice--
We need a motion for that as well?
No, no. It will be, it just, notice to the community that it will be re-notice, and it will be, second hearing will be heard on December 17th.
Okay. So, everyone in the public heard it, but for the record, it'll be re-notice and second hearing on December 17th. Mrs. Kraus, can you read ordinance 1339?
Introduction of ordinance number 1339, an ordinance entitled, "Ornance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter 7, entitled Traffic," with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for December 17th, 2018.
Have a roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Yes, right? We can--
Motion.
Motion.
Yeah, right. Did we do that already? No?
No.
All right. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, read ordinance 1340.
Introduction of ordinance number 1348, 40, an ordinance entitled, "Ornance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter 71, fees, with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for December 17th, 2018."
Have a second and a motion to introduce ordinance 1340.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1341.
Introduction of ordinance number 1341, an ordinance entitled, "Ornance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter 7, Article 1, Section 7-13, Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets," with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for December 17th, 2018.
Have a motion and a second to introduce 1341.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, can you please read ordinance 1342?
Introduction of ordinance number 1342, an ordinance entitled, "Ornance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter 7, entitled Traffic," with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for December 17th, 2018.
Have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 1342.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, read ordinance 1343.
Introduction of ordinance number 1343, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance Authorizing and Directing That Title and Possession of Certain Real Property Situated in Tax Block 110, Lot 23, Located Within the Township of Little Falls, County of Passaic and State of New Jersey, Be Acquired by Imminent Domain or Purchase or Gift," with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for December 17th, 2018.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 1343?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second to open to public comment for general matters only.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Mrs. Kraus, can you please read the statement?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President.
Yeah.
Before scouts, you begin to talk, would you introduce all the scouts and their ranks?
Yes. I am in Tim's, I'm a life scout.
I'm Jay Chen Duso. I'm a life scout.
And we start from the front, going left, right. We have Jacob Tomes, a first scout. Ian Day, second class. Dan Ransfield, life scout. And then Stephen Garrity, a second scout. And then Nate Stow, a third scout.
Thank you. So, when you read, when you come up to the podium in this type of form, you have to give your name and address.
At Tim's, 537 Main Street.
Jay Chen Duso, 69 Center Avenue.
We have a question that we'd like to ask the council. We want to know what we as Boy Scouts and as a troop can do to assist the town in the winter months to make a better community.
Okay. You're sure you want to ask that question, right?
[laughing] I think, I think we might have Mr. Simone take that up as an offer.
Can you drive it back?
Hey, Councilman Vancheri, you have any ideas?
Well, we actually talked about it last week, because there's several events coming up that we know that we can always rely on the support from the Boy Scouts, whether it's the tree lighting, or it's the breakfast with Santa the next couple of weeks, whether it's with the Little Falls Business Association, or the local 346 PBA. They're always willing to be a part of it. They've also done a great job with cleanups around Earth Day. They've also helped out with concerts in the park. I know Mrs. Shapiro was always grateful when the scouts were out there helping move some of the barricades, or just, you know, help situate some of the residents to enjoy the view from the concert. So, I think there's a lot of volunteer efforts within the town, but one thing we could also look at maybe is a day where, you know, we, as a council, the mayor, members of the town, we do a volunteer day of giving back and cleaning around the community in addition to Earth Day. I mean, there's nothing wrong with doing that, you know, throughout the year, where we just pick an event where we can come with the Boy Scouts and clean up, or even plant some flowers, whether it's the island, you know, that's on Patterson Ave is another idea, you know, to make that look a lot more sprucier when it comes spring, and even in summer. So, I think there's a bunch of different things. I know Councilwoman Cordero's got some ideas as well, I can tell.
Well--
Through the chair, Councilwoman Cordero.
Council President. We're going to be reinstituting the garden committee, and they're going to really, in fact, I talked to two of the members that are really going to be spearheading this, which is Trish Tumi and Ann Kawati, and they definitely will need the help of the Boy Scouts as they look to do seasonal planting all year round and seasonal cleanup. So, I will definitely make sure that I connect you guys with them. That'll be extremely helpful, not only in the planting and the cleanup, but also in the maintaining on an ongoing basis. So, you know, thank you for offering your help, and I'm sure we're going to put it to very good use.
Councilwoman Seber?
Sure. Thank you for being here. So, I think there's also, we have a lot of other committees in town too, such as Municipal Alliance and Open Space, and I think they're all looking for additional help and support. So, Municipal Alliance specifically with drug and alcohol abuse, especially to our youth communities, and those outreach programs. So, I think anything that you can help to help volunteer and get the word out, or Open Space, where we're looking to continue to beautify our town and our park systems, any of those volunteer works can also help. So, I think that continual outreach and also to continue to support and to get the name of Boy Scouts out there, so I think it's very important that we continue to also help you to grow your foundation. So, it's not only about your group feeding back to the town, but it's also supporting your organization to help it grow and flourish within our community. And I think that it's really a two-way street. So, it's also you helping us, but it's also how we can help you. And I think that's something that I'd like to hear from you about how we can help you and grow your organization and support, because you guys have been so helpful to us and our community.
Any response to that?
[laughing]
You could say, "We'll get back to you later." Mayor?
Sure. I have something that I actually get a number of emails about throughout the winter. And I get contacted throughout the winter by a number of our seniors in town who have issues with removing the snow from some of their sidewalks. And what we may be able to do is to help you help us as a whole town, and we may be able to get a list of a number of seniors in town who have issues removing the snow from their sidewalks following a storm. It may need some assistance in doing that. And if we can get a list of, you know, a handful of homes together, I'm sure there are a number of seniors in town that would be extremely appreciative of the fact of you gentlemen getting there, not during the middle of a storm. That's not something we're, we're looking to do. We don't need anyone to be put in any sort of danger. But just following the storm, when the roads are safe to travel again, maybe getting a handful of homes together where people need some help, you gentlemen can get over there, help clean those sidewalks and driveways for the elderly who can't do it themselves or have issues. So, that may be something that we can do, and if you're willing to help us, we're willing to help you get a list together of those people who might need some help.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comments?
That's quite enough.
Quite enough? You got all that, right? Next time you go on an overnighter, scouts, reach out to Councilman Vancheri. I'm sure he'd like to spend a weekend with you up in the mountains, make sure it's a cold venue. Thank you for your attention tonight and coming.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward? I see another, Mr. Fernandez, can you hold a second? There was another scout that wanted to come up. That's okay. You're welcome to come up. Mr. Fernandez will yield to you.
I'm Stephen Garrity. I live on 30 Zealiff Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. My question is, the rec center, is there any, like, way in the future we can get it so anyone can go there and, like, use the soccer nets or just play baseball?
Okay. As a, as a team, you mean, as, when you say anyone, you want to--
Anyone, just like if friends just want to go hang out and play soccer.
Are you being prohibited now from playing soccer?
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure that it's like, you're not allowed to just go and play at the rec center.
Just to kick the ball into the net, you mean?
Yeah. Council President.
Okay. Councilman Vancheri, would you like to comment?
Yeah, typically, what the rec center does ask for is a permit to use the field, so they don't let just anyone go on it, unfortunately. So, it's, and sometimes too, the fields are closed, and therefore, you cannot go on there. That's why I think Stephen's talking about, you know, just having the ability to go there with his friends and maybe just play for a little bit.
So, if you and a few of your scout friends wanted to kick the ball into the net, he would have to, if he, if he wanted to kick the ball into the net, he would have to seek permission, is what you're saying to the governing body?
Typically, yes, it's a permit that usually, when it comes to using the fields, that's the challenge that they've had in the past.
So, we'll work on that and try to make that process much easier.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Excuse me one second. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jacob Tomes.
I live on 6 Villa Road in Little Falls.
Good evening.
Um, in response to the open, open space you talked about in the park system, I own two dogs myself, and I know people walk their dogs a lot around the town, and I was wondering if you guys were ever going to consider, like, implementing some type of dog park or something, like the dogs in the town.
Would you have a recommendation of where you would like to see this dog park, scout?
Um, I'm not really sure, but I know the area down by where that old field was, where it just got opened up. I'm not sure where, near 381 Main, down that, down where that is.
Lewis Street?
Yeah, Lewis Street.
Would you like to say anything, scout?
He's there for moral support.
Councilwoman Cordero, would you like to comment on a dog park?
Well, that's really been a topic that we discussed in Open Space. I happen to be a dog lover. You know me, you know that my dog is a big priority. And this happens to be a town that really loves their dogs. The council goes door to door every year, and we could tell you every time we knock on the door, nine out of 10 times, there's a dog behind that door. The challenge is finding the right place for it, since you really don't want it to be near residents, although most people are dog lovers. Having barking dogs early in the morning or late into the evening can be an issue. So, we have talked about it, and we are looking for potentially an appropriate place to put the dog park, and then also how we would fund it. It's not just the cost of establishing a dog park, it's what it would cost to maintain it. So, maybe you guys, if you can think about some ideas about how that can be maintained and get back to us, that would be very helpful.
Any other questions for this governing body tonight? Thank you for coming up to the podium. Any other scout like to approach the podium? Mr. Fernandez, they're showing you up pretty good tonight.
My name is Daniel Ransfield from 48 Hudson, 48 Hudson Street, Little Falls, New Jersey.
Good evening.
And was Little Falls prepared for the snow? And did it make you think about stuff that maybe we could do for the snow, like, later on in the winter? Because obviously, with what we've seen so far, it's probably not going to be a great warm winter. So, is there anything that we're, like, thinking about doing to prepare for those, for the snow days and stuff?
Scout, would you like to say your name and address, please?
My name is Ian Day, and I live on 4 Overmont Road.
Do you have any questions for this council?
I sort of summarize it up.
Okay, very good. So the question on board here is, were we prepared for the storm that came recently? Is that correct?
Yes.
I think we were definitely prepared. I think we could always be more proactive, but I would let, uh, the mayor speak on this behalf. He's the executive branch of this governing body and will tell you if, uh, he thought we were prepared or not.